...meeting to order, this March 28th meeting is called Order, and we are going to go a little different than we normally do. Normally, we'd go into the Planning Commission, but we have some special guests here. So, let's go to our Public Comments section. And, well, let me ask, Craig, pray for us.
Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity to start our time today, coming before you and invoking your presence and your power upon this meeting today, on our gathering together, conduct the business in county, to exercise the freedoms that you have so graciously given us to participate in our governance. Father, it's a privilege for us to be able to do that. Help us to never take it for granted. While we lift up our brother Brad to you, I pray, Father, especially for a measure of peace, contentment, Lord. Could you bring to them the solace that they need in this time of testing? Would you help Mr. Prentice, Lord? I pray, Father, that he has been a man after your own heart. Father, we have watched him over his lifetime, be a powerful and effective witness for you. I pray, Father, that you will guard him today, that you will see to every need that he has. Bless the hands of those who are giving him care. Father, I pray for the family. I pray, Father, that they can be able to stand up under this moment of pressure. Father, I pray that you will oversee everything that we say and do here today, that it will please you, and that, Father, we can leave out of here to be good witnesses for you wherever you take us today, in Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you. First, I guess, Public Comments or our 4-H. And Heather, you're here, I saw you. Craig, can you help us here? And Heather, come up, and we want to recognize our 4-H champions.
That's exactly right. So, Ms. Heather Jennings is the Extension Agent for 4-H here in Rankin County. Come on forward, Ms. Heather. I want to say a special word of appreciation to Ms. Heather for all of her work in coordinating and helping the kids in our county to have exposure to some really great things in agricultural-based extracurricular activities. It's a privilege, Ms. President, for us as a Board Supervisor to be able to recognize some kids that had won some awards recently, some 4-H awards. And so, we want to have a moment of special recognition. I'm going to go ahead and call out the names of the kids who are going to be recognized today. And when I call your name, if you'll come forward, please, and stand close to Ms. Heather here for us, all right? Lila Quick, Landry Varner, Layton Varner, and Paxton Lamore. Very good. Each of these guys has won awards.
And girls.
And girls, that's right. Have won awards in 4-H and recent activities, and they've done an exceptional job. We all know and recognize the amount of work and effort and energy that has to go into the preparation. These awards don't just happen. And by the way, they don't hand out participation.
No.
So, these awards have been earned through hard work and dedication, and, dare I say, some good instruction from moms and dads and family members who have spoken into how to do it, how to do it well, and what sort of dedication it takes. Each of these awards involves animals, animals that have their own sense of what they want to do, when they want to do it. Sometimes, they need to be encouraged and trained and taught the specifics of each event that they're in. Is that right? And you all have to understand how to deal with them when they don't feel like doing what you want them to do all the time. And so, it's good preparation, by the way, for being Board Attorney at some point. Just, that's a freebie there. So, what I want to do, gentlemen, this morning, is to read this resolution that has been signed on behalf of the Board of Supervisors by each of the supervisors. And each of you has an original of this resolution I'm going to give to you when I finish reading it, okay? So, listen while I read this resolution that the Board has adopted today. This is a resolution to be congratulating our 4-H champions of Rankin County, whereas the Rankin County Board of Supervisors supports the farm families of Rankin County, Mississippi, and their children engaged in family-friendly, agriculture-based extracurricular activities, such as 4-H. And whereas it is with great pride and a sense of accomplishment that the Board of Supervisors recognizes and congratulates the winners of recent 4-H competitions as follows. Lila Quick, who is a student at Discovery Christian School, won Reserve Champion Best in Show for Senior Dough. Is that a sheep? No, it's not. I don't even know what I would call it.
There you go.
Grand Senior Any Purebred Dough, Grand Junior Any Purebred Dough, and Reserve Junior Any Purebred Dough. Lila has been participating in Rankin County 4-H for four years. Landry Varner is a student at Florence Middle School and a Rankin County 4-H participant for seven years. And he won Overall Grand Champion for Mississippi Bread Market Goat. I know that's a goat. Layton Varner, who is a student at Florence High School and a Rankin County 4-H participant for eight years, won Overall, I'm sorry, that's Layton right there. She won Overall Reserve Grand Champion Market Hair Sheep, Reserve Medium Weighted Market Goat. Layton plans to attend College of Mississippi State, I'm sorry, at a Mississippi institution. I kind of got a bit of that. At a Mississippi institution by graduation. And she's planning to study public policy, maybe, with an eye toward becoming an attorney.
You got time to change your mind.
I'm trying to spirit of med school. Paxton Boyne is a student at Puckett High School. He's an eight-year participant in Rankin County 4-H. And he was awarded Reserve Champion Commercial Dough and Champion Light Weighted Market Goat. I think that goat also got fourth overall, didn't it? Okay, good deal. Paxton is active at Puckett High School in the FFA, whereas it is Rankin County, Mississippi's proud privilege to be a supporter of agriculture-based communities in our county, especially proud to support our youth and their parents who firmly believe and who seek to achieve at the highest levels of success in agricultural-based competitions. Rankin County firmly believes that these competitions provide experiences, opportunities, and encounters that last a lifetime, and serve to instill valuable mental and physical skills, work ethic, and occasions for learning that would be otherwise unavailable. We are very proud of these students and their families for the commitment that they have to the betterment of the next generation of farm families in Mississippi. Y'all join me in thanking.
If y'all will stand, and let us get behind. Way to go.
Hey, Landry, Layton, y'all think I helped y'all win this one back?
No.
Hey, I want, these youth have won championships, and we recognize our champions, whether it's baseball, or basketball, or soccer. But these children put in as much or more time into what they do to win their championships than the other people, athletes, that come in. So, they are special, and the parents are extra-special. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
And I'm just giving y'all thank yous from our kids for their support and the premiums as we do every year.
Thank you. Good job.
All right. Before we get into Planning Commission, I've got Chris Bryan from T-Mobile.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
So, my name is Chris Bryan. I know I'm on a time limit, so I'm going to make it real brief, short, sweet, and to the point. I want to accomplish one thing this morning is just to introduce myself and the company of T-Mobile to Rankin County. I run the state government team, or the government team in the state of Mississippi. So, I handle all public sector except for the federal government. So, T-Mobile, if you're not familiar with the company itself, is a public company, very profitable. They merged with Sprint in 2020. So, T-Mobile took the reins, and they had the capital to start building the network, which we have. Over the past 36 months, just in the U.S., they have spent over $30 billion putting up cell sites. That's averaging 1,000 cell sites per week, building and turning them on. So, that sounds great to everybody. But what company here in the state covers 100% of your turf? Nobody. Whether it's AT&amp;T, or Verizon, Cispyre, T-Mobile, nobody does. But I'm here to tell you that things are about to change. So, if you have never heard of the company or the man named Elon Musk and SpaceX, so, T-Mobile and SpaceX have become into a partnership where we are actually launching the same equipment that we put on a cell site here on the ground, we're putting it on a satellite, low orbital satellite. We're already operating in that manner right now. It's in beta testing. We're sending text messages and pictures back and forth to the ground already, on the same device that I'm carrying in my pocket right now. What that does for us here is it's a game changer, whether it's your day-to-day operation or in a natural disaster. We don't, we can rely on, and we do rely on, the equipment that we have on the ground. That's our terrestrial network. But in time of need, we will have 100% coverage. If you can see the sky, we will be able to get information, data, and voice back to the ground. And that's a huge game changer in the industry, okay? So, really, that's what I wanted to tell you this morning is to, you know, allow us to, you know, be in front of you and introduce myself. And if we can help any of your departments or anybody in the future, we would love to, you know, do that. Have exchange of card with the administrator, and I'll be glad to follow up and come visit with you individually or by department. So, I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And feel free to come back if you have any news you want to share with us in the future.
I would love to.
Do you have any timeline on your completion of your satellite system?
Yeah, so, we expect 18 to 24 months. We're already, like I said, we're already sending data back and forth. But to, you know, for a commercial product, it's probably going to be about 18 to 24 months.
So, what about, you said y'all are putting up towers across the U.S. Do you have a plan for Mississippi? How many y'all intend to put up over the next few years?
Yes, sir. We already have a network in place, and I've got a bill planned for 2024. I don't have it for '25 yet. So, I'd be glad to share that with you as well.
That'd be great if you could send it to our administrator.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Any other questions? Thank y'all. Y'all have a good day.
All right. Now, call Planning Commission to order, and we'll go into that. And I'll start off, do we have 0 minutes? Do we need to approve some minutes? Okay, let's, do I have a motion to approve the February 29th?
Sub move. Second.
Jay makes motion. Scott seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion approved. All right, old business. Okay, all right. New considerations.
The first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Melinda Simmons and Claude Warren Pelmer at 195 Bannon Landee Circle. They're seeking a conditional use to operate a personal care home in an existing home on this property. It's a 4.37 acre parcel in RE1. They're proposing a personal care home for the elderly with one caregiver and three residents. The application states that they will offer comprehensive assisted living services, including 24-hour care, assistance with daily activities, nutritious meals, social activities, and medical supervision. License isn't required unless they have more than three occupants. So, this property is on Bannon Landee Circle. And this is Cottonwood subdivision on the property. That's the 4.37, and in Loveville Hill is across the street. This is an aerial view of the property. And these are views of the asset property. The applicants are here to know if you have any questions for name. And these are the surrounding properties.
So, are they here? Can you come up?
Good morning. So, can y'all kind of tell us what you plan on doing? How many options you intend on having?
So, we're calling our home Magnolia House Personalized Care. It would be an unlicensed personal care home, so it can only have three or less residents.
So, they would be living there?
They would live there full-time.
Okay.
And there would be a 24-hour caregiver.
And that's an individual, not three families?
Correct. Three, just three.
Individuals.
Yes.
So, this is your home?
This is the home we purchased for the purpose of turning it into a personal care home.
Will y'all be living there also?
We would not live there.
Okay, all right.
Does it have somebody there full-time that is not a patient or?
There is a, there would be a 24-hour-a-day caregiver there, yes.
Somebody would live with them.
24 hours a day, maybe not the same person. So, a person might serve like a shift pattern, like two and a half days, two and a half days, and two days.
Y'all got to remodel the home?
We do. We do.
Rewinding the doors, making the bathrooms accessible to be, just walk in, roll in. There'll be no living showers, they'll be open.
This is about four and a half acres.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is something new to me, so I don't know any other questions to ask.
Well, they're starting, you don't have to be licensed to, you know, for what they're doing through the state of Mississippi. You know, for what they're doing, you don't have to have a license, you know, to do that.
Can, is this going to be a conditional type? Okay, all right.
So, it's, is it even mentioned in Arizona context? Did we state that personal care homes are listed as a conditional use for a, or does it fall under some like? Quasi-public?
Yeah, and then facilities is defined in there.
Got you, all right.
Now, this strictly just be for the elder?
Yes.
So, be seniors, it's an alternative to the nursing homes?
Like a big box nursing home, or even a small bed assisted living facility. This is just an alternative. It's an option. We would say it's home-like, but it's not even home-like. It's a home. It's a home first, and I think that's what's important. If someone doesn't want to go to an institutionalized nursing home, they have another option.
Is, tell me this, just from my knowledge, do they, is somebody going to prepare their meals?
The caregiver. So, I like to think of it, because I've served so many years as a stay-at-home mom, it's like a stay-at-home mom for the elderly. So, there's a person there who would get up and cook breakfast for them, and cook lunch. They would sit around a table and eat their meals, lunch, dinner, and if they need help with any of their daily activities, getting dressed, taking showers, getting around the house, then the caregiver is there to help with those activities.
Is this on a platted subdivision?
No, sir. This particular piece of property is not. It is adjacent to platted subdivisions, but it itself is not a part of a platted subdivision.
That's right.
Couple of questions that I might, go ahead.
All their medications will be up to them. The caregiver cannot give it to them.
The caregiver can assist, like, just like if you might put the pills out for the person to take. They might help them have their pills in the right order. Like, on Mondays, you take this pill, on Tuesdays, in the little pill boxes. They might help them, but they wouldn't administer anybody.
Right, because they're not licensed to touch, actually, they're not supposed to touch the medication to give to them.
Correct.
There'll be an RN, a registered nurse for that?
If someone needed assistance, then we would have like a registered nurse on contract that could help them.
Or an ALPN would qualify to do that.
Right. So, we would, our plan is to have a licensed nurse that's available if we need a licensed nurse for any of those activities, whether it's medication or anything else that you would need a licensed person.
Just out of curiosity, a couple of questions. Is there a process to qualify the resident for access to the home? What does that look like?
So, the, I guess the initial point is if someone is interested, they would give us a call, and we would talk through, usually, we would be talking to like the son or daughter, and we would ask questions. And then we would want to lay eyes on that potential resident and make sure that everything, that we have the ability to care for them in the way that they would want to.
That's the point. There's a level of care that can be provided in this situation, and there has to be a process to determine whether a given applicant can even qualify to be resident in this home under y'all's arrangement. Is that, am I tracking with that?
Yes, absolutely.
And so, I would envision that from time to time, there will be people who would like to live here that have to be told, "I'm sorry, but we can't provide the care that you require."
Very possible.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood that.
So, I know you said your maximum would be three without licensed individuals. So, is that in your intention, that three would be your maximum?
Three is our maximum currently.
Okay. What about vehicles, come-and-go traffic, you know?
We would anticipate there, we would anticipate that the residents would not typically own cars. But there might be family coming to visit, and there would be a car for, we assume there would be a car for the caregiver unless they got dropped off.
Right.
But parking, we'll cover that later. But there would have to be adequate parking.
We have a very long driveway.
I was going to say, if you can see any of the pictures, yeah, there's the driveway, and there's ample parking.
When you go up there, you can see the garage. To the right of that, there's actually spots where the previous owner had, where they were parking cars. And so, it's a rock driveway that they have.
And we don't anticipate, I mean, I took a walk in my neighborhood this morning, and there were six cars that they had managed to get in the driveway. And I was like, that's a lot of cars. They made it look nice. So, I mean, if I, maybe on a holiday or something, like if we did a special Thanksgiving dinner or something like that, we might have quite a few cars. But I don't anticipate there being many cars.
Okay, thank you.
Anticipating some conditions to be like this, there has to be full ADA compliance, and you understand all of the?
I think there's probably some discussion about full ADA compliance that we need to have. I'm not sure if we all.
Yeah, so, there's some level of compliance with ADA that has to be achieved. And so, that's to be determined. You understand that that would be a part of the condition?
Absolutely. Like, we've already wired, been taking steps to do the showers.
We would probably condition that the parking itself not create any sort of aesthetic issue in the community, right? So, cars parked out on landing landings are no-go. So, that would be a condition likely. I can envision that the board may want to condition, place a condition, that this will in fact be, and the conditional use permit that we issue is for an unlicensed personal care home. You understand that?
Yes, absolutely.
So, that if there's ever an intention to come back later and do something more, and become a licensed facility somehow, that's going to require coming back before this board. You understand that? Okay. I can't think of anything else, any other questions that I might have at this point.
Y'all spoken to any of your neighbors yet?
We've actually, actually, yes. So, we found that the neighbors that have stopped by, so we've been working on the home, and the neighbors that have stopped by have actually been really friendly and open to the idea. We know that probably not everybody will be. And so, like, that's why we wanted to come and hear as many comments and questions today and next time as we can, because we want to be able to address, we know this is scary, this is different. And people don't know what to expect because there aren't a ton of them. If anybody knows of one, we would love to hear your experiences. We did, you know, maybe one other that's in the county.
I take it this will be y'all's first as well?
Yes.
And so, the fears can go away. What you're going to see is that we're going to be the best neighbors that you could possibly have. Our yard's going to look immaculate. The house is already coming along. It's looking beautiful. And so, they're going to be quiet. They're going to be asleep by 8:00. And when they do get up early, they're not going to make noise. There's not going to be traffic because they won't drive. And their families are going to come and be supportive. And so, we're going to.
Not a lot of hip-hop.
Yeah. Loud music and loud parties going on that we anticipated.
Well, it may be loud, but on a company.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank y'all.
Next on our list relates Scott Stewart.
All right, so, Scott Stewart, Central Mississippi Corps is seeking a conditional use permit at 735 Highway 468. He was previously approved to operate a scrap metal business in an existing home at the back of this private drive. He owns a 4.40 acre parcel, Zone A1. So, he was approved for this use on the adjoining parcel at the end of this private drive in February of 23. That's an aerial view of his property and his house. And then, this is his site plan. And the area was torn into an existing building on his property. He's proposing to relocate his assets into that building. Everything will be stored inside the building. His hours of operation are three days a week, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And he's here today, if y'all have questions for him. There was some security, some conditions placed on the previous approval, like for security, the cameras and things. He complied with all of that. This is a picture of his home on 468. These are views of that building that he was staying in. This is a view of his neighbor's property. He and his neighbor shared that private drive that runs between their two homes. This is the neighbor's shop that's behind his house. And then, this is the building he was previously approved in. It's at the very end of that private drive. Mr. Stewart is here, if y'all have any questions for him.
I have one. What's the reason moving?
About the economy nowadays. I see it. I mean, the economy got bad on me. Shop notes were huge. My other shops already paid for. I built it when I first bought my home. It's more than large enough to accommodate what I'm doing.
Yeah.
My business is down to a third of what it was a year ago. Um, I had already agreed to purchase the back shop in advance of a decline in the economy. Precious metals, platinum, palladium, rhodium, um, all that I deal in has gone, rhodium's gone from thirty thousand an ounce to four thousand.
Wow.
Which crushed my purchase of my catalytic converters.
Yeah.
Um, so my business is down to one-fourth of what it was, and even if it wasn't, the economy being where it's at, we're not making a profit, we work.
So you're able to sell that back shop?
I sold it.
And there's access to it, another access to it, and are they gonna use your drive?
They're gonna use my drive, they got it, it's already written in.
Okay, all right.
This is just what I need, I mean, like I said, I don't know if I want it paid off, I just wanna move back into it.
Got you, all right.
There's nothing changed, y'all have already heard, we talked to y'all about it in the past, y'all approved me through the law. I mean, y'all heard no complaints on me, I'm pretty confident of that. I'm a quiet person, I just run an honest business.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. Next.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Robert Covington at forty-eighteenth Highway forty-nine South. Uh, Mr. Covington is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a fireworks stand. Uh, it'll be in an existing four-thousand-square-foot building.
Oh, that's why Joe's here.
How'd you know?
It's a four-eight hundred square foot building. Uh, it's a three-point-one-six acre parcel, it is zone C-three, and the sale of fireworks is listed as one of the conditional uses in this building. This is an aerial view of that property, and then this is the building, the new building. Mr. Covington is here today, if you have questions for him. These are surrounding properties.
Where is this?
Just north of the shale station on forty-nine.
Right on the star.
And this will be operated during the, uh, regulated times and stuff, and Joe, is this, I mean, you're pretty much the guru of fireworks, it's just...
It, it, it fits within the neighborhood requirements, and it'd be oper-
Safety, all the safety stuff.
It'd be operated in forceful state law only times it can be operated as fireworks standing, twice a year, from the fifth day of June to the fifth of July, to the fifth day of December, to the second or third of January.
Are y'all purchasing the property, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you haven't purchased it yet, though?
No, we got an option, first condition, which y'all do.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Tisla Water Association on Barstow Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to construct a water well and a future ninety-foot water tank with two fiberglass, fiberglass storage structures. Um, the property is located at seven-five ninety-eight Hundred Point Seventy-one. Uh, it's a three-point-seven-two-eight acre parcel, it's zone RE-one. That's an aerial view of the property, and this is their site plan. Um, the water well is gonna be, uh, here. The two fiberglass storage buildings will be in this area, and then they show the future elevated tank just north of all that. The, uh, access to the site is on the gravel drive. This is the elevation of the future tower, and then these are views of that property. Trust that you stayed in this picture of the park on that gravel drive, and then these are surrounding properties.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on this?
Good morning.
Morning, Austin Moore, Heflin Engineering.
Um, Austin, I know there's a need, uh, there's a couple of different water associations out there that are needing to add more volume or more water. I don't have, I really don't have any questions. It's just whatever Renee, uh, tells you that we need to do, uh, we'll handle that down the road. But this is a review, and then next session we'll, we'll set it.
Okay.
Understood.
So the fiberglass buildings, where are those for?
Uh, for chlorination, is the disinfection that, uh, water wells use for treating the water in accordance with the Mississippi State Department of Health. Um, and one of them will house a little booster pump, uh, as part of that process. This is very standard water well, uh, capacity and requirements that y'all see throughout Rankin County.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the last item is a conditional use permit for Joseph Hindle at thirteen-twenty-four Tricklebridge Road. Uh, Mr. Hindle is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty square-foot home with metal siding. Uh, this property is located at the end of Tricklebridge Road, it's a, a piece of family land. Uh, they've divided out two-point-oh-eight acres for the hot, house site from the larger parcel. The property is zoned RE-one, and RE-one doesn't allow the metal exterior outright. Uh, that's an aerial view of the property, and then this is his site plan. So, this is the larger piece, you can see the access going back to the two-acre parcel. This is just a, a larger, zoomed in. Uh, he's got a circular driveway, and this is the location of the house. These are the elevations of the home, the front and rear are proposed as wood siding, and the sides will be metal. So this is, um, the property at the end of Tricklebridge. Uh, there's an existing home on the property, that was his mother's home, and these are other relatives, family members.
Do we have a picture of the house, I mean, what?
Was it proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I showed it, this, the elevations, I'm sorry. So the front and the rear are proposed as wood siding, the sides will be metal.
Oh, okay.
Just the sides.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
Okay, those are surrounding properties.
All right.
Okay, next is the site plan architectural review for Sidney Coke on Star Road. Oh, please set the public hearings, that's the next section.
All right, let's go, public hearings, start the process over again.
All these need a public hearing for the same day?
Are they all, it's gonna be on the same day?
Same day.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, if we set public hearings one through five?
I'll second.
All right, I made the motion, Jay seconded the motion. Any other discussion? Do y'all have any issues that you don't wanna set one of these, or not?
No, I'm good. Scott, you good in everything?
Good.
All right, I made the motion, Jay seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, or set.
Thank you.
All right, now site plan.
So next is a site plan architectural review for Sidney Coke on Star Road. Um, Mr. Coke was granted a conditional use permit in December of twenty-three for a mechanic shop on this one-point-one-two acre parcel. Property is zoned A-one. Uh, that's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan. Um, so you can see the location of the building on the property. The, uh, entrance and driveway is proposed as gravel, it's gonna surround the building. Uh, it'll all be gravel. Mr. Parker has, uh, reviewed the drainage and had no comments on that. Um, the building is proposed as a metal building, it will be light stone in color, and these are the elevations. Oh, and there's a, um, an existing screen, uh, on the west side of that driveway that he's going to leave, um, to kind of block the view from the road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, don't have anything on, good with it, I know, you know, where it's at, and what's, what's around it.
All right, uh, do we need a motion?
Can we treat that as a motion to approve, Sid? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with it.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, Skid made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Like, we be, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, gentlemen, the first item under due consideration is Jennifer B. Cox, this is a zoning violation. Uh, I've never known how to pronounce the name of this street here, so it's B-O-W-S-P-R-I-T. I don't know if that's Boesprey or Boesprit, whatever it is, Boesprit Lane, uh, that's District Two property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Ms. Cox or anyone on her behalf to be prepared to step forward. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received, um, a report from the HOA in Ragatta that, um, a storage building had been put in the, um, backyard. The, obviously, this is in the, uh, Reservoir Community District, um, and so it says that accessory structures have to match the home in materials and color, and they have to be five feet off the side and rear property lines. And so these pictures were taken on the sixteenth, you can see the top of the, it's a little portable structure, you can see the top of the building.
Where is it?
It's in my backyard.
No, I mean, on this...
You see it.
You can, uh, it's, you see the top of it right there?
That little thing right there?
Yeah.
That's what they're giving me static over, and I lowered it two inches.
Okay, so, uh, these pictures were taken on the sixteenth. This is the little building. And I think that they said that they have drainage issues, and so that's really the only place they can locate the building.
Picture approved.
So these pictures were taken on the twenty-seventh, and he did work on the fence. You can't see the top of it anymore, but it, it is within the five feet.
Can we just not take this up? I mean, it's not mine.
Is, is this a covenants violation?
It's the RCD, so it's the Reservoir Community District, it's the overlay.
I'm just curious, has there been any discussion from the folks with the HOA that this is a covenants violation in addition to being a potential zoning violation?
I'm not sure, I don't, I don't think so.
The head of the HOA... Second, so, we, we haven't looked at, we haven't looked at this.
I haven't looked at their covenants.
They just want us to be the bad guy.
Yeah. That's the impression that I'm getting, yeah, so...
Now, we, we made some changes in the new zoning ordinance to say that they have to handle it first before we get involved.
Agreed, I agree. Let me ask this, um, to, to address this from the zoning context, do we just need like a variance or some kind?
Well, that, that...
Conditional use or something?
It would be a variance, just to say that it could be within that five feet.
This is different from your typical nuisance consideration, this is, this is a zoning, a potential zoning violation. So, uh, to, to address a potential zone violation, what we need to do is to encourage the property owner to request from you the consideration of a variance that makes it no longer a zoning violation. Does that make it clear and plain? That's what I would propose that we do, that we take no action, that we suspend action, let's put it that way, until such time as the property owner has provided an application for a variance, and then we can take it up as a variance request and go through that process, and if the board chooses to grant a variance, we don't have an issue, it goes away. So that's what I would suggest that we do.
So, would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir, we'll see all the stint from our HOA, last year we had a big hailstorm over at the reservoir, and with my ride, we got three rides now, one of them was totaled by the hailstorm. And after I got, after it got totaled, I emailed the, the HOA guy, and I was like, "I'd like to put a metal awning up in my front driveway to keep the hail damage from totaling my other rides." And he was like, "Well, sir, why don't you just pull your ride in the garage?" And like I told him, I got three cars, there's two in the garage, where are you supposed to put the third? And like I said, I got, I cut my own grass, I don't hire nobody to cut it, you gotta have somewhere to store all your thousands of dollars of loan with. And like I said, I got pictures right here to show y'all of all the drainage issues of why it has to be where it's at. And it's just our neighborhood, everybody in our neighborhood's yards, drain and all this.
Right.
But the main guy that's giving me static about the HOA, I just, can I show the...
Sure.
He's giving me static, he's got a thirty-foot flagpole, he's got columns in his backyard that you can visibly see this much of, and they gave me static about seeing this much of a shed, or storage, I should say, it's not even a shed.
It's not a shed, it doesn't have, there's no concrete board.
Like I said, it can be pulled up and thrown away, the next owner don't want it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a storage.
All right.
Well, you lowered it.
That's what the lady on the HOA, that's what she asked, she's like, "Oh, yeah, that's what he did." But see, he was giving me static on my fence, but if you see, right here, my yard dips about a foot from right here all the way down to my house. And after this, like I said, I lowered my storage, and I, I, I drew a line at the top of this post right here and pulled it all the way straight to level my fence across.
And our architecture review committee within our HOA, the late, the head, the chairman of that and strip man told me in a text message that all I needed to do was lower the sheds, so that's what we did, and...
All right, well, let's just...
So whatever we need to do.
Let's just do an application.
It's just, I work hard for what we got, like I said, I don't bother nobody, we've lived at this address almost thirteen years, and like I said, all because this man wants to thank you.
Is this not something we can take care of today?
I, I don't know, sir, we, we don't have a pending application for a variance in front of us, and Renee, we typically send out those petitions, is that a zoning action that we would send out those?
Just put a sign up on the property.
Just put a sign up, there's been those posting, Jay, so there's no due process for anybody in the neighborhood at this stage, so we got, we need to go through the variance process. What I, what I would suggest that we do today is suspend any action on this matter that is before you, just suspend it.
Yep.
And let's, uh, allow the property owner to go through the process to, to put an application for a variance in front of us, and we'll handle it that way. Let me point something out, the, the, if there are multiple issues here, this is a very dense neighborhood situation, so you've got neighbors that live in very close proximity to one another, and so you're, from time to time, you're gonna have these kinds of challenges where folks are upset about something that neighbors doing, and that they have to deal with or look at. That's age-old issue that none of, nobody on this board is prepared to or qualified to solve. And so, uh, so this, this will happen from time to time, uh, where we, we are called upon as the board supervisors almost to be like the policeman for what is a, an internal issue of a densely populated neighborhood. We don't like to be in that situation. We don't enforce covenants. What we do is look at our zoning ordinance and determine whether or not this is a zoning violation, or we look at our nuisance considerations. This is not a nuisance consideration, this is a zoning. So we can fix the zoning with an application for a variance for this particular structure. That eliminates that part of it, however, the neighborhood has its own covenants, restricted covenants, and I would encourage the folks in that neighborhood to pull them out, review them, and make sure that you got good compliance on restricted covenants, because once it's clear that the county's not intending to deal with this anymore, they may decide to take matters in their own hands. That's not last, the only thing, that's the last thing that needs to be said, so we just need to move on. We're not gonna act on this today.
All right.
So we'll show that that matter has been suspended, and, uh, the property owners can submit an application for a variance for the little, the, the, the little shed.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, you got anything?
I don't. Um, I rode by and took that, I can't see it from around. All right, no brainer. Uh, that matter is, that public hearing is closed, and we will show on the minutes that no action has been taken on that matter. Uh, item two, gentlemen, is Willie and Lydia Hobbs, this is a zoning violation as well. I want to call your attention to that, but it's also a nuisance consideration. Two fifty-one Lancaster Court, this is a District Two property. This time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Mr. or Ms. Hobbs to step forward at this time, and Renee can demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received a complaint on February first about a storage building without a permit, parking on the street, a boat in the yard. Um, I think Kathy has had some contact with him. These pictures were taken on the fifth, this is in Castle Woods.
This is RCD?
It is. All right, so these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday, they have done quite a bit of work. But there is the issue of the, um, little storage facility here, it doesn't meet the regulations either, so...
Right.
I think it, it's portable, it's actually just like a frame with a cover pulled over it, I guess.
Renee, remind us what the RCD requires with respect to an accessory structure like that.
That it can't be within, uh, five feet of the side or rear property line, and that it has to match the house in materials and color.
That's the key. It's, it's got, it's gotta be, what we would say is compatible with the, with the structure to which it is accessory. It needs to, it needs to kind of sort of look like the house. Needs to, it needs to kind of sort of look like the house and be constructed in similar materials.
Yes, ma'am. You see what y'all need to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you think you need to get that into compliance?
And I don't know how you get it into compliance. I don't, uh, to make it appear...
Start over?
Take it down. It's a metal frame with a tent over it. It'll, I mean, now, there's a, a wood platform, you know, that he built.
For the base?
Yes, it's, it's, he can go straight down to the wood platform and still have something to like put his motorcycle on or whatever, you know, take her around.
He just needs to get it so that it's not exposed above the...
Right.
Okay. Um, you wanna give him sixty days, something like that?
Sixty, yeah.
Sixty days, get it taken care of, and we'll come, somebody'll come out and look at it. I'm sorry, we're going through this, but it's our job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we gonna table it for sixty days, is it?
Yes, sir.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Scott makes a motion to table it for sixty days. Do I have a second?
A second.
Skid seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes will reflect that that hearing is closed. As president, item three is the Farrell S. Simpson and Tanisha D. Shields nuisance property consideration. It's a District Four property, two-o-eight John Martin Drive. I'll ask Mr. Simpson or Ms. Shields to step forward at this time. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, this property is in Reservoir East. We received the complaint January twenty-ninth about an inoperable vehicle. These pictures were taken on the twenty-ninth.
Anybody here? All right. I'm gonna declare this a nuisance unless...
They took care of it.
The automobile's been removed?
These are the new pictures.
Okay, okay. My bad.
Nobody blames you. It's rare.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Everybody really, this time, had made an effort.
So, are they part of the overlay district?
No.
Or not?
No, no, no. Okay.
We've got complaints.
Now, you're gonna have to be a little bit quicker to respond.
If it's been taken care of...
We show no action, Steve. There's nothing, we need, we don't need a motion or anything. The minutes will reflect that no action was required. Let me express appreciation, uh, to Mr. Simpson and Ms. Shields for getting that into compliance. We appreciate that. Gentlemen, we'll reflect that that hearing is closed. Item four, Angela Christine Murphy. This is a nuisance property consideration at three-twenty-five Cherry Bar Drive. This is a District Four property. I'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Murphy to step forward at this time. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, this is in Reservoir East also. We received a complaint about an inoperable vehicle with a flat tire and expired, expired tag. These pictures were taken on the twenty-ninth. And these are the new pictures. The owner has changed the tire and purch, purchased a new license plate.
Okay.
So, it was taken care of.
All right. No action?
Yeah, that's correct. And the minutes will reflect that the hearing is closed. That's all of our nuisance considerations, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you. The next meeting on this will be May second.